I'd like to welcome everyone to the in-depth meeting of the City Council for November 8th to 2012. I'm sitting in for the mayor who's in China and have their roll call, please. Greg?
Certainly. Councilmember Spread?
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Chahade?
Present.
Antfik?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
Lorette?
Present.
Seven present, you're, well, six, seven. Seven present won't have to be honored.
Okay. The second item on the agenda tonight is Section 8 Housing Update with Dick Yarrington. So I'll turn it over to Dick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For temp. In the presentation tonight, I've expanded it a little. I'll run through it very, very fast for you, but I'm touching some on the other housing programs we do have, so we'll get started. The Housing Agency was created in February 1951, some 61 years ago. Most of you probably didn't know that. Probably older than most of us here, possibly. Then in 1969, the City Council established a low-rent housing commission, and at that time, there was a Board of Directors that was separate from the City Council. Later, the City Council took over that role. Little information. It's been in the city a long time. The purpose of the Housing Agency is to provide safe, decent, and sanitary housing conditions for very low-income families in Muscatine County, to manage resources effectively, and to promote personal, economic, and social upward mobility by providing families the opportunities to make the transition from subsidized to non-subsidized housing. And that last part, we take that pretty seriously, and we've done a few things in the last few years to address that. The Housing Agency is a HUD-sanctioned housing authority for the county of Muscatine. That's our service area. The agency is administered by the city's Housing Department, with the City Council acting as the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Agency. Real fast, I'm going to run through the properties we have and the programs we have. Of course, most everyone's familiar with the Clark House. It was built in 1977. It's a 100-unit high-rise. The population served is 50 and above. Our manager is Courtney Ferreira. The income guidelines for the Clark House are 80% of the median income and below, and you can see what the median incomes are for one- and two-person families there. I wanted to bring that up, and below, I think the audience out there will be able to see that the telephone number and the email address and that kind of thing, if there's anyone out there that has, citizens that have more questions about the Clark House or any of these other programs, or want to fill out an application, they can contact that number or the email address. The next is Sunset Park. Sunset Park was built in 1984. It's a 50-unit family complex. The manager there is Chad Yoakam. The income guidelines for Sunset Park is 50% of the median income and below, and as we can see, a one-person household is 22, 6, 5; two persons, 25, 9; three persons, 29, 1, 5; and four persons, $32,350. That's Sunset. That's our fence around the place. The next program is a program we run out of Sunset Park, which is the Sunset Park After-School Program. This after-school program was established in March of 2010. The City Council, a year prior to that, approved building the addition to the office you see there on the top photo to the right, and we call that our education center, but that's where we run our after-school program out of. The kids at Sunset Park that are eligible in the after-school program are between 12, or K through 12. Most of our children that come are actually of elementary age, however. Now that everyone has an iPad, though, or iPod, or anyway, an Apple, they tend to come a little more frequent because we do have Wi-Fi there, so they can access that. Our hours of operation is Monday through Friday from 3:30 p.m. to 6:00, or whenever the bus gets there. Accomplishments for 2011 school year, we were open 172 days. We had 26 registered students. We had 2,443 instructional hours. The students read, because we track all this, the students read 1,456 books. Also during the summers, the last two summers, anyway, the school district has had a meal site at Sunset Park. It's been an open meal site, so anyone in the community, any kids in the community could eat there, but we did serve 1,000, or they served 1,044 meals out of the after-school program site that, in the past, we've never done before we were able to build this addition to the Sunset Park office. The next program is the Home Ownership Program. It was established in December of 2009. Our agency is a HUD-certified housing counseling agency. The population we serve are as low to moderate-income households or home buyers. The services we offer are homeowner education, foreclosure counseling, pre- and post-homebuyer counseling, and financial fitness education. Accomplishments for fiscal year 2012, we had 44 people graduate from our homebuyer education program, excuse me. That is an eight-hour course that people have to complete before they can graduate. We served 115 clients, and there were 33 closings for first-time homebuyers, all in the city of Muscatine through that fiscal year, so that was pretty significant, we thought. Next is Hershey Manor Senior Housing. Most of you may not know a lot about Hershey Manor. Hershey was built in 1984. It's what we call a 50-unit low-rise development. The manager is Sue George. The income guidelines are 50% of the median income and below. Hershey is a project-based Section 8 facility. It is owned by the Hershey Manor Board of Directors, a private, not-for-profit housing corporation. The city of Muscatine manages Hershey for that corporation, and we have managed that from the very beginning, from when it was built, so. It's not ours, but we get paid to do it, and...
Did we manage the old facility also?
Well, I don't know. That I don't know. I think it was a nursing home. I don't think we managed that. Section 8, what everyone wants to hear for, now we're on the agenda. Within the Section 8 program, there are three programs. The Section 8 Rental Assistance Program, our Section 8 Family Self-Sufficiency Program, and the Section 8 Home Ownership Program, which dovetails into the other homeownership program we have for the general public. The Section 8 program was started in 1969. We have been allocated, at this point, 376 vouchers, which HUD allocates how many vouchers we get. We're not always able to put that many out on the streets due to funding restraints, but that's how many they've allocated us. The population served is primarily extremely low-income families. The manager of the program is Caitlin Love. When we talk about extremely low-income families, we're talking about 30% of the median income and below. We're mandated to, for new applications or new folks coming on the program, we're mandated to have 75% be below 30% of the median income, and typically, it's closer to 90 to 95%. We can go up to 50, but 75% have to be below 30% of the median income when they come aboard. The Section 8 program, also known as the Housing Choice Voucher Program, is a federal government program that assists extremely low-income families, the elderly, and families with disabilities. This assistance comes in the form of rental subsidies. Families participating in the Section 8 program are free to choose any rental housing that meets the USDA or Housing and Urban Development HUD Housing Quality Standards, and rents for an amount that we determine is reasonable for the condition, location, and location and the condition of the property. It's a little small print here. The Housing Department inspects every Section 8 unit annually. The inspection is based on the City Housing Code. The City Housing Code is based on HUD HQS, plus the City Code as amended throughout the years. In fiscal year 2012, the Housing Department inspected 436 units. Of these units, 365 or 84% failed their inspection. Landlords are required to correct failed items within 30 days. Over 98% of all failed items were corrected within this 30-day timeframe last fiscal year, so that's quite a large failure rate, you might say, but we have to really look deep into things, and some of them may be small items or whatever, but we have to go back quite a bit. Rent for housing units leased under the voucher program must be comparable to other rents for unassisted units in similar condition, size, and location. The Housing Authority conducts surveys of all Section 8 units to determine that the rents paid are reasonable, to make sure that the rents are within the average of what rents are out there, so no one's gouging us for money or asking an amount of rent that isn't reasonable. Since its inception, some 43 years ago, the Section 8 program has been highly successful. The program has helped hundreds of Muscatine citizens and families through hard times. In fact, most long-term residents of Muscatine have either known someone who has been assisted, has had a family member on the program, or has possibly been assisted themselves. It's been here for quite a while. Over the years, landlords and local businesses have benefited from over $50 million in rental subsidy payments administered through the city. Currently, approximately $1.7 million in federal funds is expected to go mostly to local landlords in the form of rental assistance in 2012. Of course, we have landlords that don't, or absentee landlords, or larger corporations for larger developments that aren't local, but most of the dollars stay here in this Over 250 mostly local landlords have participated in the program over the last 10 years. Presently, we have 116 active landlords with housing units on the program. These landlords may include your neighbors, coworkers, business owners, churches, and not-for-profit corporations. We know because we know all the landlords, and a lot of them are just little, could be just little mom-and-pop operations that own one building, or one house, or one fourplex, or it could be a larger corporation that owns 30 or 40, but there's a lot of smaller... If we take the 116 and we divide that into our 376, we're looking at like 3.2 or something on an average that a landlord would own as far as units go, so it's spread out there. I wanted to go over a few myths and facts about the program. I get these all the time. People call me up, you know, and have a lot to say, and so I wanted to address some of these. The Housing Agency strives to work with landlords to make the Section 8 program successful. There are many myths about the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Here are some of the truths behind the myths. Myth: Section 8 will only help minority families. In Muscatine, 11% of our participants are minorities, and 16% have at least one Hispanic family member. 73% of our participants are non-minority families. A myth: If a landlord rents to one voucher holder, they are obligated to rent to all voucher holders. The facts are that landlords are not obligated to rent to more than one voucher holder. We encourage landlords to screen our participants in the same way they screen other tenants. If they fail their screening, landlords can refuse to rent to them. Section 8 clients destroy properties and do not pay their rent. The majority of our participants are good tenants. Section 8 families are held to a higher standard than most rental families in the community. If participants fail to pay rent, damage property, or commit a crime, they are at risk of being terminated from the program and losing their assistance. A myth: The Housing Authority tells the landlord what he can and cannot do with his property. Fact: As long as the unit passes the inspection, the landlord can do whatever he or she wants to with their property, as long as the city approves it. Myth: All Section 8 clients do not work and are welfare recipients. The fact is, of our participants in the program, approximately 47% are employed, and approximately 53% are receiving Social Security income or Social Security disability income. These are some of the employers that many of our participants work for. I know you all know all of them on there. They're all local employers, and of those 47%, these are just some of them, and we thank those employers for providing jobs for our participants. Many of our participants, as we looked at at the beginning of the presentation, we want to build that self-sufficiency, and this is all part of that. Myth: Most Section 8 clients are single mothers with children. Fact: Although 48% of all participants are families with children, they are not all single-parent families. A total of 60% of our program participants are elderly and disabled families that may include children. A myth: Section 8 clients are criminals. The fact: The Housing Authority will not allow persons on Section 8 if they have been convicted of a violent crime. Our criminal policy in Muscatine is stricter than the federal regulations require. Monthly, we review all arrests within the city of Muscatine and cross-reference them with all Section 8 participants. Any participant found to be at risk of others are removed from the program. So we do that. That's part of our process. We get that information, and we review it, and if there's any things on there, we follow up with all of those. Demographic information of the program. Total program participants as of August 30, 2012, were 379. Percentage of participants that are disabled in that 379 was 44%. The percentage of elderly families are over 62, or 16%. Total non-elderly, non-disabled families on the program were 182, or 48%. The total non-elderly, non-disabled families employed were as 113, or 62% of that 182 number. Total families with children under 18 was 181, and I did check today, and that is consistent also today. And the number of families in the self-sufficiency program, which is the program that helps many families to become self-sufficient and off government assistance, is 32. This is some more demographic information in comparison to general rental properties within the city. The number of all occupied units in Muscatine rental properties, no, all occupied units, was 9,008. Total rental units in Muscatine is 2,835. The average Section 8 assisted units in fiscal year 2012, it was 368. The percentage of Section 8 assisted units is 13% within the city. The total rental units with children in Muscatine was 1,006, 35% of all rental units. The number of families with children on Section 8 was 181. The percentage of families with children on Section 8 is 18%. The number of senior renters in the city, 65 and older, that's what, we got this information from the U.S. Census 2010, they don't have 62s, we had to use 65, was 535, or 19% of rental units in the city. The number of seniors on the Section 8 program is 61, and the percentage of seniors on the Section 8 program, then, is 11% based on seniors. The median household renter income in Muscatine is $23,738. The median income of Section 8 participant families is $11,061. Pretty difficult to live on $11,061 and pay your rent without some assistance. Renter household income under $25,000 annually was 1,358 families in the community, or just about half. Percentage of renter household income below $25,000 is 48, and I'm thinking that the census doesn't break it out to how many houses, how many people are in the household, but under $25,000 would be under 50% of the median income if there were three people in the household, and, yeah, actually, if there was two people in the household, and my sense is, 48% of all the renters in Muscatine are below 50% of the median income of low, so they're low-income folks. I have a few maps. I don't have a lot of information on the maps, and they may be a little bit difficult to see, but the PowerPoint is on the website. People can study them, and if you have any questions, you can ask Andrew, because he put these together. But this shows percentages of occupied units in Muscatine, but it shows percentages of rental units in those areas. I just got this one late today, and I didn't have a lot of chance to study it, so if anyone wants me to go back to it, I can. This one I can tell you a little bit about. This is a Section 8 housing rental units, and Andrew color-coded where there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and we wanted to look at how the units are dispersed throughout the community. And what we found is they're quite dispersed throughout the community. If you look from 4 or 5, well, 4 on up, that represents four units in that census block. 3 represents three units. As you can see, most of those units are very dispersed. There's a larger, there's a lot more color in the area closer to City Hall, but really, we're only like talking about two units, or one unit, or three units. We're not, in that block, we're not talking about 50% or 70% or something like that. So this is a very interesting slide, where you see the dark, like the 33, the 24, those are complexes. Those are out by the post office, forgetting the name of the complex, but there's some housing out there. There's some of the other complexes, Colorado Park, Sycamore Estates, those are the larger Any questions on this slide? Because I only have two more slides. Okay. I said it would be 16 minutes. I think I, that's very close. Excuse me. And this is percentage of rental units in Muscatine, occupied housing units by census block. Excuse me. If you take this slide and you compare it to the other two slides, you can start making sense out of, well, how many units are actually in that block? How many are of Section 8? How many aren't? That kind of thing. So I have one more slide, and that is, this is by income, the number of renters in Muscatine. We already mentioned how many renters we had, which was 2,000 and so. This breaks it all down. We have 159 below $5,000. We have 309 below $10,000. We have 310 below $15,000. We have 243 below $20,000. We have 337 below $25,000, and then we go up from there. Very interesting slide also. Of course, we can only assist 376 of those, but that's a very interesting slide also. I think that's, and that's all I have. Any questions?
You have 73 with $150,000 household income.
That's not me. I own, so. Yeah, there's plenty of people that don't want the responsibility of owning their own property, so, you know.
Dick, do we have a policy of limiting the number of Section 8 vouchers per city block? We don't have an area that gets too saturated, which is...
Absolutely not. If we did that, then we would be violating federal law, and we wouldn't go about doing that.
So we could have a whole city block that's...
We cannot dictate where any Section 8 person is going to live. That's a federal regulation. It's called Fair Housing. It's part of the Fair Housing Act.
Hey, Dick, how many people do you have on the waiting list?
We have 150 people on the waiting list, but what we've done, we would have a lot more, but what we've done is we went to a lottery system sometime back, so we only keep enough people on the waiting list that we're actually, we think we're going to go through in like a 12-month period. So we could have as many as we actually wanted. The waiting list is closed, and it's been closed for six months, and we won't be opening it up for another three months at least.
Thank you.
Are the vouchers portable, and do we know if...
Yes, the vouchers are portable.
Do we know how many of them are used locally?
Yes. The numbers I have are all local vouchers. Vouchers can go portable, however. If a family, say, gets a job in another community, they can move to that community. We do what we call portability, and we send them there. We send their paperwork to them. The receiving housing authority has a choice to absorb that person or family, or to bill us for that family. Sometimes we get in an issue where housing authorities, which have much larger programs and which the rents are much higher, want to bill us two to three times the amount that we actually provide in a subsidy for our folks. We don't have to allow that. If our budget is close to maxed out, we don't have to allow that. We haven't allowed that for about a year now, but they can go portable, and as long as they're absorbing those, that family, then, and as long as there's a program in that area, yes, they can.
Have we had a lot of portables coming to Muscatine?
We cannot stop anyone from coming in if they have a voucher, but no...
You say everybody's local right now, but has there been...
Absolutely. We might have 15 to 20 a year that come in, and we might have about the same that go out, yeah. And we have a number of people that go off of the program because they no longer need assistance, and it's like transitional to them, so. We have a few people that we find on that police blotter that we have to, you know, lay off also, but, yeah, we have them come in, they also go out. When we do select people, however, we do put them on a preference level. We give everyone a preference level, and we can't deny people that don't live in the community, because everyone is eligible as long as their income eligible, but we can put them on a preference, and the folks that we do issue vouchers to are people that are living in the community at the time that they made their application, and are living in the community when their name comes to the top of the list, so.
Thank you.
Council, have any other comments, questions? Thank you for your presentation, Dick.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Very informative. Next up... Next up are capital projects. I'm going to go to Greg.
Greg, I'm not sure who's going to come up first, Randy, I guess, but tonight we wanted to give you a virtual tour of current projects and some of the upcoming projects. Rather than taking a bus trip, we thought we'd do a virtual tour, and John and Randy put together this presentation for you, so we're going to kick it off with Randy.
Traditionally in the past, the city council has taken a tour in the fall of different facilities and projects, and this year, for a variety of reasons, we weren't able to do that tour. However, we are going to bring you a virtual tour by way of a PowerPoint presentation that will get you to many places more quickly than you would if you were on a Musca bus, and keep you warmer. The numbers tonight that you're going to see, associated with the projects, are construction cost numbers, and I want to emphasize that. Construction cost numbers are usually, often, always, the bulk of the cost of a project. However, there are always soft costs that go with any project. Soft costs are defined as the design costs, surveying, staking, acquisitions necessary, project management. So to understand the total cost of a project, it includes both the construction cost and the soft cost. City engineer John Lutz and myself will be giving a co-host presentation tonight, if you will. And as we go through this, please don't hesitate to interrupt us and ask questions with it. John is able to hopefully answer most of the engineering or design questions, and I'll do my best at the administrative ones. So with that, we'll get started. Originally completed projects that I just want to hit on very briefly, is, the first one's the Hershey Avenue Reconstruction Project. And this project was funded with general obligation bonds. In the future, I will refer to those for the public's sake as GO bonds. It was also funded with Surface Transportation Program funds to the tune of $381,000, and I will refer to that as STP funds. This project is not closed out yet, as we are still awaiting the final DOT audit review. But for all intents and purposes, the work has been completed. Next project is the Harrison Street Extension Project. This was funded with the road use taxes. This project has been closed out, but we're withholding retainage until there's some sanitary sewer pipe repairs that need to be made before we finish paying the retainage. And the third project we want to show is the Wildcat, or Weed Park to Wildcat Den Trail Project. This was funded with a variety of funding sources. As you can see from the slide, this project starts in Weed Park, parallels the Bandag Drive around the Bridgestone Campus, has intersected with Ford Avenue, and continues on over to University Drive, and University Avenue, and crosses to Solomon. This project was funded with federal earmark and private funds, and some money out of the city's collection and drainage system. This project has been closed out and is very much in use right now. The next set of projects we want to talk about are those that are currently underway.
Randy?
Yes, sir.
Since you finished the first slide there here, out of these completed projects, where do we stand, or how many of these projects came over budget or under budget or right on target?
I won't answer that in a general term, but I think I'm probably pretty much correct. Just about every project will come in over budget. The fact of the matter is that as you go through projects, there will be change orders that will occur, usually impacted by quantities that are required for the construction, which ultimately leads to an increase of what the costs are. I can also say that, to the best of my knowledge, none of the overruns have exceeded percentage-wise any more than 5%. But I would have to check on that to be sure, Osama, I'm not exactly right. But I would be misleading the council and the public to say that we always come in on budget or under budget. That's just not the case.
And maybe just to clarify that, Randy, projects coming in over or under budget, or over or under contracted amount, I would probably clarify that by saying over contracted amount, not necessarily budgeted amount.
Right, two different, right, two different ways to look at it. I'm looking at it from a contract cost, and what we budget for it, what we actually budget for it includes those soft costs, and that's why it gets much more difficult for me to tell you. But from a construction point of view, we're usually over budget, or over a construction cost.
So is that information you could get us?
Yes, it is. Nancy puts that together on an annual basis, and we can, we'll get that out to you.
That'd be good. Thank you.
The projects that we have underway right now is the Mad Creek Levy Project. The Levy Project is being funded with GO bonds, and also the, the risk of sounding funny, the levy tax levy, the first levy with a double E, and the last levy with a Y. And that is, this project is anticipated to be completed at the end of this month, and I don't know, it's, there's a huge cost to this project, $8,992,000, or the city's contribution is $3,100,000, $2,500,000 of that's cash, and $600,000 is incoming contribution. Next project is the West Hill Sewer Separation Project. This project, this is phase one. The funding source is the one cent local option tax. The construction work will come to winter closing at the end of this month. I want to let everybody know that Cedar Street will be opened up, probably within the next two to three weeks. I think they were striping parts of the street today. But the project will be shut down at the end of this month, and then will start back up, depending upon the winter, but contractors are optimistic about March. I tend to think April is probably more realistic as far as a startup on this. When they do start up, the work will take them up Sixth Street up to Lynn, and that will be the next phase of this project. The contract amount's $3,688,000, and to date, I can not, I am not aware of any significant changes in change orders that have impacted that hugely, one way or another. And there are some anticipated underruns that we think will occur as we start going up Sixth Street.
So are we, it's showing we're stopped at Eighth Street. Are we going to go on over to where Pappus enters? Those underground?
There'll be another slide later that will show the whole area.
Okay, okay.
It'll be better suited to explain that.
That'd be good. Thank you.
The next project is the West Hill Sewer Extension, or I'm sorry, the Mad Creek Sewer Extension Project. This is one that was recently, at the last council meeting, a contract and bond approved by the city council. This project is being funded by the Sewer Extension Reserve Account. You can see the path for this project, which just goes from Ripley's. It's a gravity sewer line, basically follows Mad Creek as it ultimately gets over to the existing sewer on the other side of Highway 38. The contract amount, $994,000. Yesterday, the city held a pre-construction conference on this, and the construction work is to begin on December 3rd, and this will be a winter project, will be done, or worked on during the winter, with anticipated completion by June of 2013.
What's the housing development there that's shown in the lower, lower part of the picture?
It's on the county, Phil, I'm not sure just which one that is.
Is that the one of the Rolling Acres, out on the...
It's one of those, yeah.
You're right. I couldn't think of it.
The next project is, it's really not our project, but we would like to address this, and that, because the Fridley Theater Project is impacting Mulberry. Those of you who have been out on Mulberry have seen that this area is torn up recently, and I will let John address what's going on with Mulberry.
So this is a commercial subdivision in town here, and Fridley's are putting up a theater and parking out there, along with several other commercial lots, and part of their construction includes Palms Drive, which will be a collector's street that will eventually be headed down towards Cedar and be connected to Cedar. We planned this as a route, it's headed the right direction, and they have this started. They've constructed this, this will be a public roadway here. Also, along with that, Fridley's were interested in having the entrance area from 61 bypass to Palms Drive actually fixed and done with, so that during their operations, they would never have to deal with road construction. So we entered into a TIF agreement to have constructed, reconstructed the Mulberry from the Casey's entrance to beyond Steamboat Way. And so now we're having a 43-foot wide roadway with a taper lane also coming into Palms Drive. They did paving 28 feet wide about a week ago, and just yesterday, they finished the paving on the taper lane in connection to Palms Drive. They'll do some striping and painting on either this weekend or Monday, and we're hopeful for getting the road opened up to through traffic down the center late on Monday. That's a hopeful, depending on weather. I think there's some snow maybe moving in and rain on Monday. That's a summary of the project, if you had any questions.
So they're, the gravel road right now?
Yeah.
Will be, part of that will be concrete?
They, they have to add another 14 feet with curb and gutter along portions of that segment, and then rework the connection to Steamboat Way and rework the connection to Casey's. And they'll have to stage that also, because we cannot close Steamboat Way, we have to do that half entrance at a time. But it will be much better for cars driving on the pavement than on the gravel.
The next project is a study, is a northeast quarter study. The funding source for the study, which is being done by the engineering firm of Snyder and Associates, the funding source is from the one cent local option tax, the pavement management allocation of the one cent local option tax. This is essentially a connector road from 38 to 61, and specifically from Old Park Avenue West to New Era Road, Solomon Road. A presentation is scheduled for the city council at the January 10th in-depth city council meeting on this. This next study is actually an interesting one from my point of view. It's called the Muscatina Island Inundation Study. The purpose of this study is to evaluate different scenarios, if the levy is either breached or overtopped. And these scenarios are being studied to assist in developing emergency action procedures, including evacuation planning. I know that Phil was at the meeting that we had on this. A lot of the stakeholders in the south end, businesses, business representatives, agricultural representatives were at this meeting. This project is being funded by the Army Corps of Engineers, there are no local funds going into this study. So there's been a question of what would happen if the levy ever broke, what kind of time would the city have to evacuate people from the south end, the island area? And what it comes down to is that, you know, this is a hypothetical issue, you know, depends on a lot of scenarios. But what the Corps is doing is they're modeling three different breaches, locations. One is at Musser Park, another one would be around Monsanto, and the third one is at the pump station flank levy down by Michael's Creek. And the modeling will show what type of, what kind of a timeframe we would have in trying to evacuate the area, what businesses need to do in the area to move their equipment, what farmers might need to do to move their livestock, things of this nature. Actually, it, when you start looking at all the different types of hazards, is one way to put it, catastrophes that could occur, there are a lot of them that are in this area. And so this type of study actually is, came about from the city's review of our insurance program, and one of the local representatives on the city's insurance team, Hal Larson, had asked if we'd ever done anything, any study like this as a GPC, certainly a major player in this area. And we had tried a couple of years ago to get the Corps to help us with that, funding was not available. Follow-up call to them this past spring, early summer indicated funding was available, they were very much interested in doing this, and that's how we basically got rolling with this. I think it's going to be an excellent study, great information will come from it, and it certainly will help the city an awful lot in our own preparation. You have to understand, you have well fields, you have businesses, you have a power plant, you have a treatment plant that would not work. So just, if you're living up on the higher portion of Muscatine, it doesn't mean you would not be impacted immensely by something that would occur down in this area. Anyway, we are looking at a technical review of the preliminary hydraulic modeling on June 30th of 2013.
Randy? Is there any reason to believe that those three hypothetical breach locations are actually high-risk points in the levy?
Yes. The, from my point of view, I've always been concerned, and I'm, this is a non-engineer talking, okay, but I've always been concerned about Musser Park, because that's where the river turns, and I would think that the pressure that it puts on the levy at that particular location would be significant, plus when there are high-water events, and there will be one every year, as long as the Mississippi is out here for the most part. We do monitor that area significantly for boils, as water comes in underneath the levy, and also seepage. The next area, two areas, actually, these were brought to us by members of the Levy Commission, particularly Mr. Barton Hagan, who is the chairperson of the Levy Commission, very, very helpful during this meeting, and he recommended that, he also concurred with Musser Park, and he's the one that suggested down by Monsanto, and we thought about that area also. And as you go further south, I am not that familiar with it, but he talked about Michael's Creek. So it's, that's how these particular areas came about.
Okay, thank you. And I, and as Randy said, I attended this meeting, and it's kind of like, okay, I live up on the higher spot in Muscatine, how's this really going, why am I really here? And then they told me that I, you couldn't use this, possibly couldn't use the toilet, wouldn't have power, didn't have water, and I'm thinking, that kind of takes it all into perspective.
And John would like to, I mean, on this particular slide, this was, what, 2011, John?
Yeah, this was the spring of 2011. This, this slide just gives you, it's not necessarily a flood, it's not a flood condition, but there is a lot of seepage that happens through the levy during high water on the Mississippi. It's a sand levy, and it's not like this is in the flood plain directly behind the levy, but there's a lot of water that needs to travel along the levy and back, and fields do start to get flooded. This really isn't what the study's about. Our study, this study is about a total breach, and that is really the reason why we picked three locations. It's not like this exact location, we think there's something wrong with the levy, but we want to model, hey, if it breaks at the lower end, what's going to happen? If it breaks in the middle, what's going to happen? Or if it breaks way up at the front end in Muscatine, what's going to happen? And each three of those situations will be different, roads will be covered, different roads will be covered sooner, different utilities will be affected differently, and their evacuation plan will be much different for each one of the...
and their evacuation plan will be much different for each one of those different situations. And back to this original slide, our, our emergency response plan follows this study, and that's what we'll put together, that's another, that's the purpose of doing it.
I found it interesting also with this, and hadn't given it a lot of thought till representative from DOT was at this meeting. And they said, you know, the roads get covered even with a little bit of water, and all of a sudden, transportation down that area is almost nonexistent. So that, it's, it's big on what would happen down there. The next project is Mississippi Drive Quarter Project. I do not want to spend a lot of time in this council. I will tell you that the funding source for this, whether our federal grants and bond proceeds for this. We're awaiting IDOT approval on the NEPA clearance in our preliminary design. And I believe that Steve Boca will be addressing the city council on this project within the next thirty days. And the next project that is underway and will continue into our upcoming projects is the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. This is funded with GEO bonds and also STP funds, STP funds to the, in the amount of one point seven million dollars. And this is John's project, so I'll step back and let him explain it to you.
So when I pulled this slide up and I, I looked at it, I was reminded of how different the roadway looks already. It's widened, it's opened up. People have seen a lot of tree clearing going on and dirt being brought in, and, and already with our construction, it looks a whole lot different. Why did we do the project? We had pavement failure going on, we didn't have turn lanes on any of our intersections that need turns, turn lanes like Logan School area. And we had some utilities we were considering doing something with, and the brush encroaching up to the roadway, no sidewalks on the corridor. Here's a couple of before and after pictures. This is the upstream end of the culvert at Wood Creek. And this is what it looked like beforehand, you know, the, there's a lot of brush growing up on the front end. The retaining walls got excavation or erosion behind it. We basically extended and straightened out the creek here, so it's lined up with it and widened it out so that we've got good water flow right down the center of it. This should improve the flow through the culvert, actually. Here's the downstream end of the Stonebrook Culvert, and we needed to extend this in order to get proper grading and turn lanes and road going across it. The actual structure was okay with a little bit of erosion onto the end, but it needed extended some energy dissipation on it and some erosion protection downstream. The last part of the culvert extensions were a wall and drive across from Wood Creek. And the reason to use a wall instead of extending the culvert was it already had an energy dissipator and, on it, and I believe we would just save that and not get down into the creek and work there. And the wall, the driveway needed to be moved and brought up closer directly across from Wood Creek. Second project we had was tree clearing. We needed to do tree clearing before our April timeframe, according to DNR. This was done in preparation of our utility project, and so other utilities such as gas and electric can do their work to relocate their utilities. The gas company, Alliant, relocated their, what used to be a steel line, and they put in a six-inch plastic line on the south side of this entire corridor in locations that won't be affected with new road construction. They did that at no cost to the city. Cedar Utilities Project is currently underway with branch construction. It involves water main relocation and storm sewer and some grading. Starts at the exit of the Y and heads west. And the water main ended up being connected back in, across from the apartment complex, just east of Grace Lutheran Church. The reason we had to replace this water main was that it was, the existing water main was too high up into the roadway such that when the roadway would get regraded as it got widened out, there would not be enough cover on the existing water main. The reason why the rest of the water main on the roadway is okay is because those sections of roadway do not, do not need to come down significantly. There's some more storm sewer work we're doing with this project at the end of Forest Parkway, just east of Imperial Oaks. There will be grading and storm sewer done in the ditches. And the reason to do this work is so that later, when the paving work is going on, all our work is up top. We're getting, we're getting this work done so in the summer of two thousand thirteen, when we get into August, when we're into this phase, that it will proceed much quicker.
For the upcoming projects, and we will continue with what John's explanation with Cedar Street. The check plans have been submitted to DOT since we are using one point seven million dollars of STP money. And that has been submitted, and final plans will come back to us at the end of this month. So we anticipate DOT letting this project in February of two thousand thirteen. John, you want to take it?
Well, this is the remaining part of the project to reconstruct Cedar from Hauser to Param. Phase one will begin on the west end of the project between Hauser Street and Imperial Oaks. There's some storm sewer on both sides of the road there. And up in front of the high school, we'll be putting in new signals. There'll be three lanes there. If you come from the right, there will be a fourth lane or the east that turns into the high school. This should drastically increase the flow of traffic coming into town in the mornings. The guy in the right lane doesn't need to wait behind somebody that's turning left. And this should eliminate the stacking that happens all the way from the intersection here to Hauser Street that occurs almost daily. This, and Imperial Oaks is where we're going to divide phase one and phase two. Before school starts, again, in the fall of two thousand thirteen, we have scheduled in the contract for the roadway to be completed up to Imperial Oaks. And phase two will begin for the rest of the fall. The division between phase two and phase three will be at Stonebrook. We need to provide access out both ways. There is some grading that happens in front of Stonebrook. That intersection will come down a couple of feet. Logan, about two hundred feet of Logan will be regraded and repaved as that intersection is lowered. You'll, you won't have a car that will pull up at such a steep grade for entering Cedar there anymore. And along this entire route, the trail, basically with the current grading going on, a lot of the trail, road bed is already prepared, and there will be a full ten-foot-wide trail on the north side of the road. The project will finish up over at Param, and there will be three lanes there headed east and west. There will be three lanes on Param coming back south. You'll have a right turn lane and a left turn lane. This, this should also speed up traffic at this intersection. If you're heading into town, you do not have to wait behind a car that's turning left at the intersection. Should be a stop and go. There's not signals planned for this intersection, just stop signs.
Have you given any thought to what that's going to mean when you go up Param to Mulberry?
We put a right turn lane also, and it's difficult because there are some, we didn't, we did not get into the parking on the medical building there, but we did squeeze it through to add a short right turn lane to head up Param.
Back on the, just very briefly, on the Cedar Street paving project, we anticipate the estimated cost of this is two point nine million dollars. And we also will be receiving an agreement from Muscatine Power and Water for the electric and the communication portion of this project to go underground. This agreement is similar to what the city council acted on regarding the water not too long ago. The, the cost for putting the communications and the electric underground is, what we've been told is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And forty thousand of that had already been anticipated at the Param-Cedar intersection. Greg, you want to add anything more to that?
Just that we'll be bringing back those, the undergrounding of the electrical, that component, which originally was in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, I want to say two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Been able to pare those costs down, working John and MPW to roughly about sixty thousand dollars. City, city cost. Obviously, there'll be MPW cost share as well. We'd like to bring that back for council consideration as part of this project. And that would get the, get the wires below ground instead of above ground. So we'll be bringing that back in, I don't know if that'll be next week or in, or the second meeting.
I've told them that we want it by, by the, no later than the first meeting in December.
So we're bringing that for council consideration at that point in time. Good cooperation to get those costs down drastically, so.
I guess I had one question at the intersection of, you don't have to bring the slide back up. Stonebrook?
Yeah, it's right there.
When you, you said that you were going to pave down to that, and then you'd have access from Param to Stonebrook?
These, these major, these major streets with no outlet like Imperial Oaks, you basically have to stop a phase of the project there. And so that's why we, we can inconvenience an apartment complex with two drives on it and send, send everybody out one drive in a particular area and then another drive. When you have a whole subdivision, you have to basically end the project, a phase of it right at the intersection, pave up halfway through it, get the paving and grading up, done up to one side while there's something remaining for them to head out in the other. There might be short sections of rock yet that people have to use, but once we get to the intersection and gone, then they'll have open pavement the opposite direction.
Okay, so some, so if you're doing from Stonebrook to Param, somebody accessing from Stonebrook to the hospital area would have to come up?
They're going to have to at a certain point. There is a certain point during phase three, the roadway will not be open between Param and, and this location. It will be closed.
Okay.
And we'll have to deal with that going around Folium and...
They would, they won't have any problem accessing Logan, for instance?
Logan will have free access down to that location.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The, the utilities that we're talking about putting underground, they start here just west of, of Stonebrook. They're about even with Logan, just for explanation of where that starts and ends.
So get your bike out, Osama. The next project, upcoming project, is the West Hill Sewer Separation Phase Two Project. Again, the funding source is the once-own local option tax. The next slide will show basically phase two, which will go from Lynn Street up to Eighth Street. The, it goes from Lynn to Locust, and then it goes through a ravine that gets up to Eighth Street. Estimated cost on this is four hundred, or four million five hundred thousand to five million, five million dollars. We anticipate a bid letting on this in January of two thousand thirteen.
Phil, you had the question?
Yeah, from Eighth Street out to Folium, where I, I guess that's, it's, is it combined? Or Papoose comes down partway and then it, and is not combined from Folium?
There is sanitary sewer that dumps into the Papoose Creek about fifty feet down from the entrance. Up until the entrance of the Papoose Creek Sewer, it is separated. But, but from that location on, it's, it's about, it's directly across from the hospital area on Cedar. That's where you're seeing that dark line heading up from Folium. It's kind of difficult to see on there, sometimes this pointer works and you can...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've lost all perspective with this, man.
So about, on Folium, about probably a thousand feet up the timber valley headed along Cedar, there will need to be a line extended through the timber to catch sanitary sewer up there. But the actual Papoose structure itself is fine up in that area.
And so far, we haven't caused the structure from where it enters underground to the riverfront is, is still intact.
Everything went fine with construction. We, we went down inside, we inspected it, we shot elevations on the top and the bottom. We actually ran a level loop through it. I had the instrument set up down in there trying to read upside down on a rod, which normally I read the other way. I made it kind of difficult for notes, but, so we kept track of that, and we haven't found any problems yet. And they just today completed the bore that is between the seventh alley alongside the house that we were concerned about and the foundation up until the open corner with the grass that the city purchased. That work was just completed today. The sleeve is in there, the pipe is in there, and they're gonna, they haven't closed up the pit yet, but they're gonna lay their pipe through the pit, cover it up with dirt, and then that's about fifty feet away from Eighth Street, and they'll, they'll begin that work from there on in the spring. There's a little bit of work right at Eighth Street, but they thought they would just quit where they were at, button everything up, and then like Randy was saying, get everything paved over and cleaned up by Thanksgiving.
So did we buy that corner lot?
Yes.
Yes.
John, what's about, what's the approximate vintage of the, the, you know, the underground that Phil's talking about?
Well, let's see, I was, that was before my time, but there used to be bridges through the city, and you see this tunnel built up Sycamore, and they built it up to the bridge. And then you can see the underside of the bridge there. You know, this was the, you know, I'm thinking this is the late eighteen hundreds.
Late eighteen hundreds. There's a picture out here on the wall, if I remember correctly, of the, of the construction going on, so it, it's an interesting project.
Close the creek, and that's what happened. And for those who've been in it, and I've had that good fortune because it's an interesting architectural or an engineering design for, to have lasted as long as it has. In the wise words of our collection drainage supervisor, Matt Chandler, is keep your head down and your mouth shut, and so that's what you do when you're in it.
And plug your nose.
Randy, before, before you go any further here, I just have a couple of comments here. You mentioned that maybe next week, you're going to bring some to council here to approve the sixty thousand or for the utilities underground and some other stuff.
See, the next week, first of all.
Yeah, well, just a couple of thoughts come to mind here. First of all, for the record, I want to say that I'm in full support of capital project here. But how are we going to pay with, for all this, that we didn't go through our budget yet for next year here? That are we just banking either on borrowing money or bonding for all this without even looking at the budget that what we going to expect for next year? So I, I'm just a little bit, this is all, nothing was budgeted for here that it's coming in front of council, and I'm just a little bit, need...
It, it actually, I mean, has been. I mean, we, we planned to bond forward in two phases. Council approved the project. There was bonding done in two thousand twelve. The remainder of the bonding is going to be done in two thousand fourteen. Additionally, on Cedar Street, we have the additional, the one point seven million dollars that, of STP funding, the additional dollars, we started out at, that was not originally planned. And so, you know, the council actually did approve it, and the funding process is part of the budget. In two thousand fourteen will be the, the last bond amount. We, Nancy planned to bond... We, Nancy planned to bond about $2.2 million in that 2014 issuance for this project. That'll likely come down based on the additional STP dollars and the overall project cost and how the project comes, or how this next bid comes in. So that should help the, the amount, or reduce the amount that's needed to, to be bonded for in 2014.
Well, still, I mean, I, I think it will be a good idea for us to evaluate the budget on how much bonding left in there, and how much we, where we stand, what's the percentage of our bonding here, are we exceeding that, we are lower than that as a whole, not only on one project? And I'm just asking here, I mean, with asking these questions, I, once again, I would say I'm in full support of capital project, but I just want to make sure that we have the funds and it's allocated for, before we go ahead and approve that, so that's...
Absolutely, and we, the plan is to be under, under the proposed amount, which was $2.2 million, as part of this project with the additional funding, but we can provide an additional breakdown. The additional cost is $60,000 for undergrounding of the electric, and we'll be bringing back that, we can provide some more detail at the, at the council meeting for you.
Okay, thank you.
The next project that is planned for 2013 is the Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. This is also being funded with Geo Bonds and STP funds to the amount of $1.2 million. There is an August 2013 bid letting expected for this. This project goes all the way from Park Avenue over to University. We did meet with the engineering firm earlier this week to talk about it and to continue to move forward. Neighborhood meeting, which neighborhood is all inclusive of businesses, schools, everyone in the area, we are planning on two of those, one next Wednesday, November 14th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Site to be determined yet, have called into MCC to see if we can do it there, if not, we'll call up Colorado School and see if we can't do it there. And the other meeting, which will be the same meeting, but is for those who can't attend Wednesday, will be following Tuesday, November 20th, again, from 4:30 to 6:30. Last project to at least show you pretty pictures on, is the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail. The estimated cost for this is $922,244. The funding source are really three funding sources. We have a $475,000 earmark that was allocated to the city several years ago. We just received an additional $300,000 in state recreational trail grant, and it is our plan, and the trail committee's plan to offset the difference with private funds. John will be doing the design, has done quite a bit of the design, and will continue to be doing more of the design, so John, if you want to talk about this project.
So the, the reason this is called the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail, even though it was, it doesn't extend to Musser Park right now, is that, is that the earmark was, was for that route. And there, the trail portion from Musser Park through Kentstein Park is completed up to Hauser Street, so that's where this will begin. We, we looked at several different routes on this, and, and with the trail construction from Weed Park to Wildcat Den, we got a lot of feedback that people enjoyed riding through a more natural area instead of right next to an existing roadway with traffic. So we believed we would utilize what we could to have that same type of amenity go on here. And we were making use of the transfer station areas and staying along the perimeter of that so it doesn't affect any operations internally. We can head down the railroad spur which is abandoned, and cross over into the compost area, follow along the edge of the property to the US bypass, and along the right of way behind the transfer station, out to the 61 bypass, and DOT has approved this route to get around their culverts at the slough area there. We met with them and they're, they're okay with that. Then along the right of way area to Mittman Road. At that point, we're going to share the road on Mittman Road, we, we don't want to, the ditches aren't, will not facilitate a, a path in them, they're, they're, they're ditches, we can't put a trail in it, or we'll have some drainage problems there. It's not a high-volume road, it's, it'll, it'll work good for share the road. At Curry's Auto, that's, we plan to head it straight south at the edge of a field to the Lamplight Inn area. Owner of Lamplight Inn was, was enthused about us doing something for the public there and getting it across his property and over to the Elms. From there, we basically have a force main running from the Fruitland area up here, and we're following the force main alignment along the railroad spur. So we head down to Dick Drake Way, cross Dick Drake Way into the Well Field area. This soil down in this area is sandy and it should be well suited to easy grading. In subdivisions on the south end, a lot of them do not even have rock underneath them, and once you drive on the, the soil, it packs rather well, so putting rock under a trail and, and getting a good stable surface should go pretty easy through this area. And we get to 33rd Street, cross that, Han Brothers has some area, we've been talking to them about heading through there. They, they hinted about using a concrete trail and recommended that versus an asphalt trail.
Why? Oh, they sell concrete, oh.
So then we get to 41st Street, and from 41st Street, it's basically a share the road down on, on a route to the end of Muscatine County. I thought Randy would describe the rest of the route.
This trail does stay on the road from 41st, basically over to Wiggins Road, goes through the city of Fruitland. There has been some discussion with the county engineer that, we know that Fruitland Blacktop is to be overlaid this, I believe this next construction season, and what's the possibility of putting in a trail parallel to Fruitland Blacktop over to Stewart Road, possibly using enhancement funds from, through the by-state organization. It's just a discussion right now, it's nothing more than that, is there an opportunity here to do it or not? That would be a county initiative, and we would probably support the county in that initiative, but there'd be no cost. This trail, once it gets over to Wiggins Road, then essentially makes a connection all the way from LeWise County to Almost Scott County, through Muscatine County. It's only part of the Mississippi River Trail, intersects with the Mississippi, the American Discovery Trail, significant contribution to our trail network. One of the things that John didn't mention, we talked about it earlier, if you can back up, John, to the transfer station. Back up to the transfer station.
Randy, about where's that intersection of the two trail systems, where would that?
Where do they intersect?
Yeah.
Well, different communities claim it, but we claim it for sure, and it intersects basically at Musser Park.
Okay.
So, the, around the transfer station, you can see a trail that we are making that is also, it's part of this, but it's primarily for people who are visiting Kentstein Park, the soccer complex, and they want to get out and walk, or whatever, and they can walk the trail system, walk around, basically the transfer station on the trail on the other side of the slough, and come back over, and, you know, it would be maybe a mile walk, run, whatever, but it's just a nice part of this whole trail network. So, and it addresses those people that are using the recreational facilities in the area. Okay, John, if we want to... Last couple of slides, just want to talk about are, they're near and dear to my heart, but they're just roadway maintenance projects, and through all this, even though they may not be considered to be capital outlay, they carry capital outlay types of costs with them, even though they're maintenance-related. Full-depth patch work projects that need to be done are Dawson, Forest Parkway, and Long Metal Lane, and you see the costs that are associated with each one of those. I was asked earlier to briefly describe a full-depth patch, and it's not just, I think patch is the deceptive word, it is the removal of a substantial portion of the street, reconstruction of that street. For instance, on Dawson, it's almost removing nearly half the street and, and repouring it. But as you can see, these numbers here add up close to half a million dollars just to do a full-depth patch work. And these are projects we've known about for some time, a budget for them, but we haven't budgeted other than we know what the cost is going to be. Another set is the overlay work, and we have not had an aggressive overlay program the last couple of years. We are aware of three or six areas that, that meet our, the criteria for overlay as far as our pavement conditions, index conditions, which is below 60. McIntyre Road, Forest Parkway, not, that is not correct. There's Forest Road, McIntyre Road, it's also, what, Island Road and Island Court down on the south end, and 65th, 63rd, and 57th. But again, you can see that these numbers are starting to push a half a million dollars just for that. So between the full-depth patch and just the overlay, you're looking at a million dollars. And the funding for these projects has been coming out of the allocation out of the road, or out of the local option tax for roadway maintenance programs, and I do not want to say that this work will be done, it's just that these are priority projects if money is available for us to do these, these projects. Okay. The last slide that I want to just comment about is the Central Business District, street scape projects. In the past, we've budgeted in the neighborhood of about $60,000 annually for work in downtown area. Now, this has not been done for several years, and so I want to emphasize that there's no money budgeted for street scape work right now, and hasn't been for the past couple of years. However, there are, when that money was allocated or budgeted for street scape, it primarily addressed period lights. We do have some sidewalk repairs that need to be made in the downtown area. There are some intersection enhancements that we could do, but these are, especially intersection enhancements, these get to be a little bit pricey.
What does that mean, intersection enhancement?
Intersection enhancements is decorative, kind of a brick area, maybe a triangular feature in the center of it. We have some designs Stanley did for us probably five, 10 years ago, but again, it's, they look nice, but they're aesthetic only, so. So with that, council, just want to conclude that our STP funding has been now set for the projects that we talked about, and focus those will be going to Cedar Street and also to Colorado. City is not going to be eligible for our turn for STP money to 2016. There are a variety of projects that this money could go to. Mulberry certainly needs to have work done on it since we're doing the rest of this, but it's almost its turn has come for Mulberry to Hauser, from Hauser to Steamboat Way to be reconstructed. We're going to look at Lucas from Hauser to the bypass, another candidate. You talked about it earlier, Scott, Hauser Street, just in general, some work that needs to be done there. 2016 beyond for that, well, in that case, now it's 12 years, you have the West Hill Sewer Separation, and, and let me just comment on, like on the West Hill Sewer Separation, we're taking care of a lot of streets in the process of doing this. So it's not like we're neglecting streets, I mean, there's a lot of money going into street repair, but the sewer separation project is addressing a lot of that. We look for opportunities to do more trails in the future, but nothing is standing right out there. Grandview Avenue at some point needs to be partnered with DOT, it's their road, and to take a hard look at what we want to do with Grandview. It is, after all, an entryway into the community, and I think its turn is coming up also. 2013, we have three significant projects that will be bid out if everything goes the way they're scheduled right now. In January, the West Hill Sewer Separation Phase Two, February, we'll have the Cedar Street project, in August, we'll have the Colorado Street project. If in fact, the additional funding is found for the Musser Park to Wiggins Road Trail, we could very possibly bid that out also in 2013. And if negotiations proceed and we are, can work out arrangements with Muscatine Power and Water, there's a possibility that water could be extended out to Ripley, and that could be a 2013 project. But those are ifs, and they are, you know, not on the books at this particular time, so it's just things to keep in mind. So with that, council, it's an awful lot of information, we're up here longer than what I thought we would be, I apologize for that, but if you have any questions now or in the future, certainly give us a call on it, okay?
Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Thanks. Good job.
Okay, good job.
Very good.
I missed the one flyover, don't I? I did print that, by the way. Okay, open it up for council comments, starting with Tom.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Jeanette.
Nothing, thank you.
Bob.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Osama.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Your Honor.
Scott.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
And Mark.
No comments, thank you.
Okay, Greg, you have anything else?
Just one quick item, in front of the podium is the copy of the article in the BioSalads Award that the Water Pollution Control Plant received, that copy of the article, and that was included in the, their national magazine, if you're interested in taking a look at it, please feel free to do so.
Okay. Have a motion for adjournment?